Call to order, prayer, Councilwoman Tadashur filed by Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, please give this council the wisdom to make decisions for the betterment of our borough. Thank you for protecting our first responders, policemen and women, firemen and women, and especially those in the armed services who give so much to protect us, protect our senior citizens and our children who are our future. We ask this in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark, roll call.
Mayor Reeves, here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Tadashur?
Here.
Ms. Reeves?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
Here.
Donahue?
Here.
I do apologize for getting a little bit of a late start. We did have an executive session prior to the start of this evening's meeting to discuss personnel and litigation issues. Presentations. For the past 20 years, Councilwoman Tadashur has been leading the charge of recognizing Women's History Month, and Desper, I'll turn it over to you for the presentations of the essay winners.
Okay. We have two 4th graders from the Eddystone School, and I'm really happy to introduce Mr. Jefter Asio. For anybody who doesn't know, principal of Eddystone School. And we're coming and thank you for helping us sponsor this essay contest. It really means a lot to, I think, everybody, especially the kids.
Thanks, Rob. Appreciate it.
And the teachers are here as well, so I'd like to introduce, Mrs. Kathy McGovern is going to come up. She's Devon Drummond's teacher. Come on up. I'm going to read Dev's essay. Do you have an incredible momma like mine? My momma is the best in the galaxy. She is caring, helpful, and giving, and she is as wise as a noun. First of all, she is caring. When my dad was in the hospital, she let me live with her, my papa. She sends me cards a lot. It makes me feel fantastic. If Dad or I need something, she gives it to us like magic. She is a magician. Another thing is that she is helpful. Sometimes, when she would come over, she and I would practice tying my shoes. She lets us use her clothes washer. If my family needs something, she gives us the money to buy it. Finally, she is giving, because at Christmas, she gives all the kids a lot of toys they want. She gives me homemade cookies. You can smell them a mile away. And most importantly, she gives me love, and I love her too. And that's why she's the best in the galaxy, and that's why I love her. I wish I had more time to tell you about her. That was a beautiful essay, and you were lucky to have a momma like yours. Momma, would you please stand and move forward? Okay, and our next presenter is Ms. Caitlin Decker, is teacher of Jimmy Tarlo. Welcome, Ms. Decker.
All right, and I'm going to read Jimmy's essay for him. Do you know a person that can watch four babies, one kid and one teenager? Well, guess who can? My momma. That's why she is so important to me. My momma is nice. She's nice because she takes me to karate. She stays and watches me do karate, and that makes me feel loved. She encourages me to do it. Instead of going home like all the other parents, she stays the whole time. She makes my life easier because she picks me up from school. Instead of a long walk home, she picks me up in a car. We drive to her house and eat. Sometimes, we even sneak some RVs. My momma loves me. She does everything for me like cooking. She plays ball with me. She asks me to play with her sometimes. I can tell she loves me because she taught me how to swim fast and slow and how to dive. That's why I wrote about my grandma. My momma is the most important person I know. I love my grandma and my grandpa, too.
That was beautiful. This is for your momma. And mommums in the audience, could you please stand? And I forgot, we also have a gift for the boys who wrote the essays. Devon, congratulations.
Desper?
Could you boys come on up? We're going to take the picture. Thank you for coming, everyone, and thank you to the teachers again, to Mr. Asio, to the students. I love the essays, and I love when the kids come up and cheer with us. That was beautiful.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Asio, thank you very much for joining us evening. The teachers of Eddystone Elementary. Congratulations to the essay winners, but, you know, most importantly, thank you to the mommoms and grandmoms that were recognized for making such an impact on those young lives. If you haven't noticed, I encourage you, look to your right, look to your left, look behind you. We've redecorated Borough Hall. Wanted to thank Councilwoman Thompson for taking the lead on the drug awareness poster contest, and Danielle, if you could kind of share with the experience you've had with the poster contest.
It's been great. We have Eddystone School mixed in with Grace Park and a few kids from Woodland. There's a total of 31 posters. You can see the different age groups. This wall is kindergarten to 3rd grade. The back wall is 4th to 6th, and then we have 7th to 9th over here. Next week, I'm sorry, May 12th, at our council meeting, we'll be announcing the winners. District Attorney Jack Wellen will be here, and thank everyone for participation, and also hand out the prizes to our winners.
If I could take just a short two-minute recess, that'd be an opportunity for the students to congratulate their grandmother, so it's just two minutes recess. Counsel, you ready? We go back on the record? Quick introduction, and I failed to do this last month, but we're joined this evening by Sean Duffy. Sean is our legal counsel from Pressman &amp; Doyle. He's filling in for Ms. Sandra Liberator while she recoups from a medical procedure, and playing the role of our borough manager this evening is Mark Pasente. Public forum, Rachel Deal?
Yes.
Rachel, if you can come forward and...
May I just stand here?
No problem.
I just have a couple questions.
Sure. Can we get your address, please?
1208 East 9th Street.
1208 East 9th?
Yes. There's a tree on that, it's like down on 9th Street, on the one side, there's like that blockway alleyway. There's a tree out there that's kind of like leaning on the fence, and there's branches that are coming over. Who's responsible? Is that my responsibility? Is it the township's responsibility? Because it's not actually in my yard, it's on the opposite side of my yard. But it's starting to lean on my fence.
Is it all borough property?
I think it is. I think it's considered borough property. It's like grandfathered back alleyway. Like, if you go up where the first set of apartments are on 9th Street, and then you have that...
Took a fire at the fire alley?
Yes.
Okay. Next to Mr. Jacobo's house?
Yeah. The old Casey Anthony's house.
Mr. Anthony's house.
Anthony's house. The old Anthony's house.
I'll let that off now and have them take a look at it.
Okay, and then the backyard at once, the Anthony's had it block topped, and I was told that it would be an issue with the water draining. But if I have a master plumber drain it into my sewer main, can I have that done? If I pull the permits and everything for it?
To be honest with you, I don't know what the legal... Is it stormwater into a sewer? Into sanitary sewer?
Well, it could be. Well, the way it drains now, actually, is there's railway ties that go down the side of my house, like down the backyard, and that actually drains into the driveway of the apartments next to me.
With all the new stormwater management, the only way you can drain it would be strictly into a pervious surface, which would be grass. You cannot, you can't tie a sewer to drain, stormwater drain into a sewer drain. It'd be illegal.
Okay. Well, what if there's like a drain there that drains down onto the side like it is now? Because it goes into like the ground, and then on the side, there's railway ties, and there's like a little thing that comes out, and that's where most of my water drains at now.
And how long has it been like that?
Since before I moved out.
And how long's it been?
A year, over a year.
It's probably, it could be grandfathered in. As long as it's decided.
You would have to have code enforcement.
Dallas is going to come out to take a look at the tree. If you could, after the meeting, leave a phone number or an email address. We could have Dallas reach out to you directly, set up a time which, you know, you would be at home, and that way, you know, you can explain to him why you're right there in the backyard, exactly what you're looking to do, and Dallas would be able to give you some direction of what you can and can't do.
The last one I had, there's the fire, the fire walk that you guys see through.
Fire.
There is a gate there. I know years ago, there was no gate there. Now, there's a gate there. Somebody keeps locking it. Isn't that considered a fire hazard? There's a bolt on it, because I've been asking Dallas about this for the last year since I moved in, and nothing's been done. We actually were, I was taking bolt cutters and cutting them off, and somebody put a really fat, thick one on there, and I'm being told it's the owner of the apartments next door. But if police, fire, ambulance, I have to get back there?
Yeah.
Nobody can get back there. You just can't get back there. It's bolted, and I was told that the township didn't do it.
I know, if the fire department could get in it, they wouldn't need to.
Well, yeah, but I mean...
But I don't know that if...
If it's not supposed to be locked, then it shouldn't be locked. I've been asking Dallas about this for a year now.
And what has it said?
I haven't gotten an answer. I'll look into it. I'll look into it. I'll look into it.
You'll have an answer this week, Deck.
Thank you.
And if need be, if need be, Rachel, we could send a letter to the owner of the apartments stating that...
If not, I have all the contact information.
Like I said, leave your name and email address for you.
Okay. That's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Dallas's email is dwaters@eddystoneboro.org. So if you have email and you wanted to shoot it to them, I won't ask you to give your email address or telephone number in a public forum, but if you wanted to put it on a piece of paper, Mr. Patterson will get with Dallas, and we'll have you answer within the next couple days.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other individuals wishing for public forum? Mark, Treasury's report, please.
Treasury's report for the month ending 3/31/14. The balance of March 1st, 2014 is $245,157.78. Excess of general fund revenues over expenses is $131,576.37. Payrolls 5 and 6 is a negative 65,362.98. Payroll taxes, a brilliant employer portion, negative 25, 572.02. Payroll charges, a negative 381.03, for a total payroll expense of negative 91,316.02. The balance as of March 31st, 2014 is 285,418.12.
Counsel, you've heard the Treasury's report. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the Treasury's report as read and make it part of the permanent minutes.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Cash receipts and disbursements journal?
Yes, Mr. President. I'll make a motion that cash receipts and disbursements journal, all bills be paid and all money's deposited.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Pasente, the Code Enforcement Report.
Code Enforcement Inspection Reporting for the month ending March 31st, 2014. Total number of inspections performed, 15. Total number of work stop orders slash violations slash citations issued, 15. Total number of work permits issued, 14. Total number of licenses issued, 21. Total amount of fees received, $5,285.35.
Counsel, you've heard the Code Enforcement Inspection Report for the month ending March 31st, 2014. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the report as read and make part of a permanent minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Pasente, the Police Report, please.
Police Monthly Police Report for March 2014. Calls for service, total for the month, 409. Total for the year, 1,210. Citations, total for the month, 159. Total for the year, 423. Accidents, total for the month, 6. Total for the year is 22. Deaths, total for the month, 17. Total for the year is 51. Parking citations issued for the month, 58. Total for the year is 155. Criminal arrests for the month, 23. Total for the year, 73.
Counsel, you've heard the Police Report for the month of March 2014. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the Police Report as read and make part of a permanent minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Pasente, the Fire Report, please.
Fire Report for the month of March 2014. Automatic fire alarms, 2. Assist EMS, 2. Assist police, 1. Assist company 07, 1. Assist company 08, 1. Assist company 48, 1. Assist company 62, 1. One brush fire, 2 cover assignments, Station 82. One cover assignment for Station 49. One investigation, 5 trains, 1 wires transformer. Total calls, 22. 13 alarms by night, 9 alarms by day. Total members responded, 165. 7.5% fire alarm. During the month, members attended 2 forceful entry classes held by Station 08. Members also participated in a seminar and hands-on training presented by CSX, Norfolk Southern, and Conrad.
Counsel, you've heard the Fire Report for the month of March 2014. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the Fire Report as read and make it part of the permanent minutes.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Chief Logg, I see that you're in attendance this evening. I wanted to pass along, you know, not only my thanks, but on behalf of all of council, I had pleasure, along with Councilwoman Gross and Mayor Reeves, to attend the hands-on CSX training. I believe we had 15 members of the Eddystone Fire Department attend, and if those recall the weekend, it was the weekend where we had torrential rain. So we, the afternoon session, was a session that was held outdoors, and it's just a testament to the dedication of your folks to be able to sit there in the rain for about three hours while we learned about the crude rail industry. So please pass along the thanks Counsel, we're in receipt of a letter dated 31st March 2014 from John F. X. Riley, which is in regards to the tax assessment appeal that was filed by the Baldwin Office Associates located at 1510 Chester Pike in Eddystone. John F. X. Riley, on our behalf, has negotiated an agreement to settle the case at the following combined fair market values and corresponding assessments, and would result in the following. In 2011, the assessment for the Baldwin complex was at $11,751,600, and the new assessment would be $10,528,800, which would be a reduction of $1,222,800. For 2012, their assessment was $11,751,600. The new assessment would be $10,665,000 even, for a reduction of $1,86,600. In 2013, their assessment was $11,751,600. Their new assessment would be $10,080 even, for a reduction of $1,671,600. And in 2014, the former assessment would have been $11,751,600, and their new assessment would be $9,828,000 even, for a reduction of $1,923,600. The Ridley Board of School Directors has approved this settlement in its February meeting, and it's the recommendation of our solicitor, John F. X. Riley, that the taxing body approve this settlement because he believes it's the best possible outcome for the taxing body and minimizes the possibility of a worst result in litigation. So, Counsel, if I could have a motion to approve the tax assessment appeal for Baldwin Office Complex?
So ordered, Mr. President.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next order of business is the Citizen Committee Assignments. There was a few vacancies that existed in the Citizens Committee, one being in the rec board. Mr. Patterson, I believe you've had a nomination to fill the seat that was vacated by Mr. Bennett?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Chrissy Groey to finish out Mr. Bennett's term.
A second.
I have a motion for Christine Groey to be appointed to the Recreation Board to finish the term by Mr. Bennett, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Counsel, we've also had an opportunity to review the roster as a whole. If I could give just one motion so that we could ratify the Citizen Committee Assignments, and at that point in time, we can reach out to those individuals sitting on the Citizens Committees and start getting involved in sort of meetings for those committees.
I'll make a motion to ratify the Citizens Committee Assignments.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I apologize, my packet's a little bit out of order, so we're going to go with the K-9 unit first. Mayor Reeves or Acting Chief Macheski, would you like to present the email that we received from Vididian Dodge regarding a K-9 unit for Eddystone Police Department?
Okay, last week, we received a letter from, an email from Frank C. Vididian Dodge, advising us that they are going to give us a K-9 dog and a fully equipped car for Officer Corre. And the training will be at no charge to the dog and the officer, and the car is at no charge.
You know, Counsel, just to be clear, the, this is the first step in the process. What I'd like to have is a motion this evening that gives Acting Chief Macheski the authorization to establish a K-9 unit for the Eddystone Police Department. That authorization, we give Acting Chief Macheski the marching order so that, number one, he can implement a policy for the K-9 unit. Also, look at all of the insurance requirements that we may have, the veterinarian requirements that we would have for the dog. Also, to make sure that we begin the process of actually selecting a dog that would serve here in the borough of Eddystone. And I do understand in discussions that we would be training along with the Wilmington Police Department.
That's correct.
That training is not scheduled to occur until the September timeframe, so I just want to be clear with the members of the audience that, you know, even though we're moving forward with the establishment of a K-9 unit for the Eddystone Police Department, it's the first step in a multi-step process that we're probably targeting the fall timeframe before you actually see a dog out here on the street. So, Counsel, if I could have a motion to establish a K-9 unit here for the borough of Eddystone Police Department?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize Chief Macheski to move forward with the K-9 unit.
Second.
I got a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Hey, please, as the months unfold, keep us involved in your process with establishing policy, and hopefully we'll find a suitable dog here shortly. Also, we should be looking at recognizing the folks at Vididian Dodge who were very generous with their donation of not only, you know, a very expensive animal that's going to be an invaluable tool here in Eddystone, but also the vehicle to go along with it. So, we'll make sure that we've got the recognition of the Vididian Dodge folks as well. We've been discussing over the last several weeks, maybe a month plus, about the redesign of an Eddystone Borough website. Counsel, you've had the opportunity to review the proposals that we've received to date, and I'd like to entertain a motion so that we can choose a vendor, we can move forward and begin the negotiations to upgrade the Eddystone website.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to have Hoff Communications be our web development and move forward with...
I have a motion for Hoff Communications. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do you have a copy of the rental agreement? Because I seem to have misplaced mine. Thank Counsel, we've had an opportunity to review the Eddystone Hall rental agreement, which would basically be the legal document that we would use to execute for the rental of both Joe Hughes Memorial Hall as well as Lighthouse Hall. I do apologize, Sean, I know that you have not had an opportunity to review it. So, what I'd like to do is just to move forward with the adoption of the rental hall agreement with the understanding that the final language would be pending legal review. So, if I could have a motion that we move forward with the adoption of the Eddystone Hall rental agreement, please?
I'll make a motion to move forward with the Eddystone Hall rental agreement. While it's approved, well, approval pending legal review. Second.
I have a motion and seconded. All in favor?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
We can do a roll call, please, Mark?
Ms. Thompson?
No.
Ms. Tadashur?
Yes.
Ms. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
President Suh?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there any other action items that we need to bring forth in front of Council this evening?
Actually, I did, I had two.
Action items or update items?
Action items.
Okay.
I'll need a motion for, I'd like to make a motion to allow the Ladies Auxiliary to use Lighthouse Hall on May 9th for, to sell flowers for Mother's Day.
One second. One very quick question before I take the vote. Lighthouse Hall, May 9th, what day of the week is that?
It's on a Friday.
No, there's no events by rec board or anything. It should be all outside now. Is it the fields?
What time does they want that, Julie? Do you know?
Like 3:00 up to 4:00. Yeah, just for an hour.
Okay. 3:00, 3:00 to 6:00?
Yeah, like 3:00 to...
3:00 to 4:00?
Yes, yeah. 2:30 to 4:30, so early, just so the kids are coming out. We want to sell them a little flower to take home.
Okay. I have a motion...
I'm sorry.
Lighthouse Hall.
Lighthouse Hall.
I have a motion to allow the Ladies Auxiliary of the Eddystone Fire Department to utilize Lighthouse Hall on Friday, the 9th of May, 2014, in the afternoon between 2:30 and 4:30 for the sale of Mother's Day flowers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And one more thing. Ladies Auxiliary is also requesting the use of Lighthouse Hall in the field for September twentieth for our first annual cow pie bingo. Judy, would you like to elaborate on the cow pie bingo?
What it is, is you sell tickets, and then we make this huge grid, and they bring a cow in, and wherever he...
Does his business.
Yes, is the winner. But we wanna make it an all-day event, basically, we're gonna have like a DJ, I don't know if we're gonna have a bonfire, I don't know what the rules on that are. Um, new bounces, you know, different things to go for the day's event.
September twentieth.
And, you know, they can, we wanna sell food, of course, and then settle tables inside, and kinda make it a big, long community thing, and other boards are welcome to put their, have their input, and then work with us.
Is there a rain date?
Why don't we make it September twentieth, and then rain date, September twenty-seventh?
Yes.
How's that?
September thirtieth. Do you use your airhouse?
No. You need to, you need to field, you need the field for the cop, for the...
For the cow, yeah.
For the cow.
I don't know how big the grids gonna have to be.
I think you're gonna keep them off the infield.
Yeah.
Gotta keep, gotta keep them off the infield.
And they're, like, she'll bring, like, an ice cream thing, and we don't have to do anything, but she'll get profit from that. She sells, like, the Sundays for like a dollar or two, and we'll get a portion of that. We're just trying to do different things to get...
I think this is a great idea.
Absolutely, great idea.
It's a great idea you guys came up with.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to allow the Ladies Auxiliary from the Eddystone Fire Department to utilize Don Marion Field.
I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion, I'm looking, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
I would say no.
Aye.
Because I'd like to know, clean up, that's all.
Oh, we'll do, we're...
Yeah. I'm talking about scalp.
Well, the first time you guys... Us, that's it, one time, that's it. And you back in your own, you give it.
Good fertilizer, too, for that. Mark, will you do a roll call, please?
I'll take some, hey.
Oh, my God, throw out, man. First, I'm sure. Roll call.
Thompson?
No.
Ms. Tadisher?
Yes.
Ms. Reeves?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Gross?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Vice President Reeves, any other action in front of counsel this evening?
That's it. Mr. Stewart?
I'll do the last call for any other action in front of counsel. Upcoming public meetings reminder is, uh, the twenty-second of April, we'll be having a Civil Service Commission meeting. The purpose of the Civil Service Commission meeting on the twenty-second at seven o'clock here in Council Chambers is going to be to establish the rules for the Civil Service Commission, as well as to make sure that we have the promotional guidelines set for the testing for chief, lieutenant, and sergeant in the promotional ranks. The twenty-sixth of April, at six o'clock in the evening, we'll be having the Eddystone Community Cancer Walk. Ms. Thompson, can you give us an update on how the registrations are coming along?
Um, no change as of last meeting. Right now, we're looking probably about seventy-five to eighty people walking. And we'll have some registrants that do come in the day of the walk.
On the, on the internet, there's a discrepancy about the time. On the internet, it says four thirty.
Four thirty registration starts.
Okay, well, it says six o'clock here.
Right.
Oh, I see, the walk is at six and registration starts at four thirty.
Check-in is at four thirty.
Okay.
All right.
We're checking into the field, Don Marion Field?
Yes, yeah.
And it's not too late to register, correct?
Correct.
How long are you taking registrations for?
Till the day of.
Till the day of?
Yes.
Okay, so even if you've not signed up, or at the last minute decide to, all are welcome, then you can take the registration right, right up to the day of?
Yes.
Our next workshop meeting's gonna be the fifth of May, 2014, at seven o'clock here in Council Chambers. Our regular council meeting's gonna be the twelfth of May at seven o'clock. Chief Walsh or Mayor Reeves, would you like to give a little bit of an update on the event schedule for the seventeenth of May, which is the housing ceremony at the firehouse?
Okay, uh, May seventeenth at twelve P.M., we're going to have a parade for the dedication of the new firehouse and housing of the new ambulance at the QRS, in rain or shine.
Rain or shine?
Saturday to seventeenth. Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
May.
Seventeenth of May. Next one.
May eighteenth.
Next one, Dave. I do have the date correct, right, May seventeenth?
Yes.
Yes. Chief Walsh, what do they do when they do a ceremony for the housing?
Usually, we invite all the fire departments from the, from the county, give out special awards, their judges judge their pieces, their company, everybody's trophies and win. And for the actual dedication of the building, back the equipment in three times. And, uh, just to groundbreak the ceremony for the building, you're breaking it in, and the ambulance, the QRS, it's the same thing, back in three times. Say if the replacement service officially...
Is this one of the traditional ceremonies where the company actually pushes the piece of equipment in?
Yes.
Yeah, the auxiliary women used to do that. Auxiliary women, you, you still used to do that.
And the auxiliary will also be involved with the, with our ceremony.
Okay.
The last event that I've got listed for the month of May is the twenty-third of May. I guessed at six o'clock, I don't know if that time is gonna work with you, Acting Chief Macheski, but that's where we're inviting the community to ride along with the official return of the bike patrol. Help me with the rules. Do we have a helmet law in Eddystone?
Yes, we do. Uh, there's a helmet law in Pennsylvania.
There's a helmet law in Pennsylvania?
It's woven under, should wear a helmet.
Should or shall?
Shall.
Shall.
According to the... We are going to try to get some helmets for some children who don't have them.
Okay. But we'll be putting a flyer out to the community, inviting everybody to do the ride along with the police officers on the bikes, but do keep in mind the helmets for twelve and under?
Yes.
Anybody twelve and a half, no helmet required?
And then state IDs are okay.
Okay. I don't have a helmet. I'm all right. I have a bike, yeah.
How long do you have a helmet?
Not your helmet.
Yeah, I guess we probably should say that it's pedal bikes.
I guess if you want to.
General updates, and Mark, I hate to put you on the spot, I was just checking last month or last week with Tim on where we stand with executing the contractual agreement with the folks at ECN and the Code Red Notification System. Do you know if we've sent a check out to them yet? Is Tina still here?
Tina Doris.
Yes.
Did we send a check to Code Red yet, or you don't, not yet?
I think so.
Okay.
I have one thing, hey, since it's getting to be spring and all, could we start to try to enforce the, um, curfew? Kids are like, kinda loud on the street during the week, I wonder if like, we could enforce that anyway? Now that it's getting to be spring.
Yes, we are enforcing the curfew and bordering ordinances along, all the other ordinances. If there's a problem in your area and you don't see the color of the white, we can do some more.
We are going to be coming out with a letter, a lot of the lies and parents about the curfew law, working on the vehicles in the streets about summer and stuff like that.
All right, great.
When you come out with that letter, why don't you incorporate the helmet law with it?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a lot of kids that are riding around that don't have a lot of helmets, no helmets.
Councilwoman Thompson, anything that you'd like to add with the cancer walk?
Nothing further.
The very last page of your handouts, I, we have an Eddystone Recycles Monthly Report. What that's giving us now is a, an opportunity to really see the impact that the recycling is making in the community. It's a comparison chart, 2013, there was not a recycling program, so therefore it's zero tons for recycling, and everything went to MSW, which is municipal solid waste. And what we're looking at is doing a month-by-month comparison now for 2014. In January and February, we've already collected nine and a half, or almost nine point six tons of recyclable material, and right now, we're at a reduction of five point eight seven percent. A little short of the goal that we're looking to have, is we wanted to have a twenty percent goal across the board. However, we did have a very harsh winter season, and now that spring is upon us, we'll be putting out another flyer to the community as a whole, let them know we've got a voluntary single-stream recycling program in place. We've also got the stickers up here at Borough Hall, and we're looking to see a significant increase in the amount of recycling that we have curbside here as we get into the spring Roundtable discussion, I'll start with Councilwoman Thompson.
I'd love to ask that.
Councilwoman Tadisher.
Um, I just wanted to, I just, I wanted to ask a question or comment. The curfew, I know it changes with daylight savings, what time is curfew now?
Nine o'clock, a little below quarter.
The kids at the, um, school playground, it seems like they're there past nine o'clock, is there...
Okay, we can incorporate goods there, just double-check, be sure everybody's out there and on the way home.
And there's, there's no age limit, right? And it seems like there's...
At least that was defined by age, but now, it was just too confusing trying to, like, the common mean earlier, trying to figure out who's twelve, who's sixty, under eighteen.
Okay. So you guys can do that? Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Can I ask a question? I just wondered, in the, the past, what, what has been the police department's policy about screening for drunk driving? Because, you know, I notice there are a lot of people coming out of the establishments in town that serve liquor who get into their cars and drive away. And when was the last time anybody was stopped after they were leaving?
Actually, this weekend, we had a DUI arrest in town, someone that disapproved again.
Do you ever go, do you ever do regular checks?
We don't, we don't, we don't target specific facilities, but officers on patrol, if he has probable cause of believing someone is driving a vehicle in an unsafe manner, and it'll conduct a traffic stop and conduct a sobriety test, but he probable causes to stop the driver first.
Okay, so you, you need to actually see them swerving on the road or hit something before you can...
Well, swerving, a vehicle violation, like you said, careless, reckless driving, some of them have probable cause to conduct a traffic stop.
So it's not probable cause that you're coming out of a bar at one o'clock in the morning and getting into your car and driving away?
Well, they have, they, they, there's certain rules, regulations to be arrested for DUI, you have to meet that criteria. Walking out to your car isn't necessarily a criteria, but an officer sees you stagger into your car and start your car, the officer should intervene and say, hey, listen, you shouldn't be driving right now, let's get home.
Okay.
And conduct, yeah, stop and then that.
I wonder about that, 'cause sometimes we have people coming out, what time are the bars supposed to close, one o'clock, two o'clock?
Two o'clock.
Because we get people coming down our street, coming out of the bars, sometimes fighting with their spouse.
Sometimes, huh?
Yeah, sometimes, well, Beth, one night I came out and there was a fight in the front of my house, and, and somebody, some man pushed his woman down in Beth's front garden, and I went out and I told him I was gonna call the police, and I called the police, and by the time they showed up, they were down the street around the corner and gone. But, you know, we were talking a lot about problems with drugs and things like that, and I think we ought to also keep an eye on alcohol in the town. I'm not saying that we need to be a dry town, but, uh, we, uh, I know, I, I don't, I'm not tuned into, I don't know the drug world that much. And I'll be talking to people, and they'll say, well, don't you see that guy over there? They just did a deal. You know, and I'm standing in front of my house, looking at the corner of, you know, like, Eleventh and Seville, and I'll look at that and I'll say, you know, I couldn't tell that, but I can tell when somebody's out in front of my house at two o'clock in the morning yelling at the top of their lungs and pushing their wife on the ground. So I'm just, I'm just saying that I would appreciate it if you would maybe review what your policies are about policing that situation in the town, too.
We, we can most definitely, uh, increase the patrols around the bar areas towards closing time and that type of thing.
That'd be great.
We most definitely could do that. In the past, we have contributed to the DUI Task Force, that's a, a system that kinda hasn't been operational for about two or three years. We still do conduct safety checks, we do the aggressive driving, smooth driving, we'll try to do checks and put extra officers out, to try to conduct some safe, safety checks and get on safe drivers off the street.
Is that mostly on two ninety-one, or is it right in, in town?
Sometimes, sometimes the staging area will be two ninety-one, it depends on what that, that section of the operation will be, sometimes they'll tell us where to be. In other areas, we can just have a guy roaming different areas where you can track.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson, anything? Councilwoman Tadisher?
That's it.
Vice President Reeves?
Um, I had a couple things, actually, um, I wanted to commend the Ladies Auxiliary for coming up with new ideas and community involvement. I mean, there was pizza with the Easter Bunny Friday evening, and I took my grandson down, of course, you can't eat pizza, but there were a lot of people, you guys had a good show. And it was really, it was good for the community. And I'm just, congratulations to you, I'm glad you're coming up with new...
Councilman Patterson? Oh, I'm sorry, you have anything?
No.
Councilman Patterson?
Yes, uh, May eighteenth at nine o'clock, we'll have our Community Cleanup Day for the following weekend when the parade goes through, it looks nice. Anyone who wants to volunteer, please let me know. We'll be meeting at nine o'clock at the corner of Ninth and Seville. That's all I have on that. I'd also like to say, I was invited to have lunch over at Marion's House, and to see it from when we first started, no one was in there for a couple of years, it was overgrown and everything, and to go in there and the students, the, the faculty is all settled in, and they prepared me a cream of potato soup, grilled cheese, salad with all the fixings, cleaned up afterwards, just see these students just intermingle with each other and the faculty down there, it was just, it was great. That's all I have.
All right. Vice President Reeves, we'll back up to you.
I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Easter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross?
Ditto. Happy Easter, happy holidays to your family, and thank you all for coming out, really looks wonderful seeing everybody here.
Councilman Donahue? Mayor Reeves?
Wish everybody a happy Easter, that's it, that's all I have.
Acting Chief Macheski?
At one event, we forgot to note, on April twenty-sixth, at Mayor's ten to two, we're gonna do the Drug Takeback Playhouse Hall, record a registration for the cancer walk. Every year, we seem to have a bigger and bigger gathering, and we're getting more drugs off to street, down to houses every year, so like, everyone come out disposable and run these prescriptions properly.
Thank you for bringing that up, it slipped my mind. Anything else, Acting Chief?
Uh, no, just wish everyone a safe and happy holiday.
What was the date on the drug take back?
Uh, April twenty-sixth, same day as the...
Uh, April twenty-sixth, same day as the cancer walk.
A couple of things, first, one of the congratulate the essay winners and the mumums and grandmums that were discussed in their, in their essays. I will second Vice President Reeves' comment about the ladies auxiliary, I also had the opportunity to go down to the pizza party and was, you know, very well received. I knew that I was running a few minutes behind when the firewalls were blowing and the fire truck was making its way weaving through town with the Easter bunny on the back, so I had to kinda double-time my walk down so that I didn't, didn't miss the arrival of the Easter bunny. Also wanted to thank the folks at the recreation. Councilman Patterson, if you could pass along comments to Pope and Norm Quinn, who head up the, the recreation board. Uh, Councilwoman Gross was there on Saturday. Uh, we had a very large turnout for the Easter egg hunt up at the field. So that was, uh, nice to see everybody turning up for that as well. Acting Chief Macheski, one of the congratulate you on, uh, what will be your new unit, uh, with the K nine unit, we look forward to your reports in weeks and months to come on how we're progressing with bringing a K nine dog. That's primarily gonna be a drug dog, correct? Or will be a-
It'll be a cross stream between, uh, patrol and detection. Detection for the narcotics and patrol.
Narcotic detection and patrol. Chief Walsh, if you could pass along my thanks to Bob Gleam. I did get an email from Bob that the evac, uh, the siren is reinstalled uh, over Penn Terminals, it was a sign that was knocked down with a snow load over the winter. Uh, and that is now operational, so we have a fire siren in the village. And, uh, I thought the evacuation horn was repaired as well, but then I got a conflicting email, we might have, still have a little bit of communication issue, but just a couple of small bugs to get that all worked out and operational again.
Yeah, opposite, uh, the road siren is the one that's down again, the hunkers, uh, Penn Terminals are operational.
Penn Terminals is operational, the village siren is down.
They are, those are working to get it back up.
Acting Chief Macheski is, I've noticed the last couple nights that I've gone by that the field appears to be open into the dark hours.
It should not be, I'll, I'll double-check that.
I know we had an issue over in Brookhaven with some vandalism and uh, on, on their playgrounds, I just wanted to make sure that you've got that as part of your normal police patrol, that there's a set time that they they come in and close everything down and we also want to make sure we protect the, the repairs that were made to the infield of the two ball fields.
It's set up as a science post, if they close at dusk and they open at, uh, more, at dawn.
And I did receive a note from Norm and Pope about the locks. This is to make sure that the locks that are on-
The old house lock and the borough lock, it's only using a complicated.
Mr. President, the, the gates over there are locked by the officers at dusk and they're open by the officers in the morning.
In the morning, correct.
And the reason that they didn't do it this past week is because I asked them not to do it. Due to the contractors needing to get the roller in there for the baseball bounties. And I did ask them if they could do it after this weekend, so they're, they're locked up tonight, I believe.
Thank you.
Speaking of the baseball field, they brought something to my attention. My neighbor who coaches baseball says there's a lot of problems up there with the duck, the duck crap on the, on the field.
Goose droppings.
Anyway, he said there are decoys that you can get. They look up, like they're outlined in like a, I guess a dog. So they're like, you get a relative, the chief, or three for a hundred bucks or something?
We just got a dog. How many dogs do we need? We just got a dog.
Hey, if we could get rid of the geese, I mean-
I've been talking to Gina about the situation is, uh, from what I understand, is he could spread us like a seed that they don't like to graze on. Uh, the other is, you're absolutely right. There's a black cutout of a, looks like a wolf. As opposed to a dog. And you plant two or three or four of them throughout the field and that will deter them until they are smart enough to realize-
Yeah, you gotta move them around, if you don't move them, they just, they'll hurt their paint. We have them in pain. They don't work no more.
Rudy Park tried that a couple of years ago and it, and they, they failed.
But you're absolutely right, we, we we need to, to control the geese population there. And while I'm thinking of it, I did speak to Gina Scott this morning.